Good afternoon, everybody. We're gonna get started with our city council meeting in just a minute, but prior to that tonight, we've got a couple of quick proclamations and some important days coming up. Is Linda Kelly in? Where...Linda, there you are. Come on up. Linda, if you would talk to us a little bit about Disability Mentoring Day.
Actually, given the timeframe, I've decided to let the proclamation speak for itself.
Okay, Linda's gonna have it... The proclamation is gonna speak for itself. All right, the proclamation for this mentoring reads as follows: "Whereas more than 1 million people with disabilities have entered the labor force since the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act in 1990, as taxpayers, consumers, and employees, people with disabilities are contributing to our society and to their own fulfillment of the American dream. And whereas Disability Mentoring Day provides an opportunity for students and job seekers with all types of disabilities to gain insight into careers by shadowing an employee through a normal business day. And employers can benefit from mentoring people with disabilities, learn about the lifestyle of living with a disability, develop lasting relationships with disability community leaders, and have the opportunity to recruit new and emerging talent for meaningful internship and employment opportunities. And whereas these efforts are made possible through a broad partnership with the American Association of People with Disabilities, supported by a host of private corporations and a dedicated local team of organizers from businesses, nonprofits, school districts, colleges, and universities, and government agencies." Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and all of our citizens, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 16th, 2013, as Disability Mentoring Day, and call upon all of our residents of Des Moines to recognize and participate in this special event. Let's give her a great big hand. Thank you so much. Yeah, we're gonna have a quick picture. All right, is Chief Chikip here? There he is. And Jonathan Lund, yes? All right. Chief, quickly tell us what's going on. Fire Prevention Week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna let Fire Marshal Lund tell about the smoke detector program that we have coming up this week, but just wanna say thanks to the city for supporting all the firefighters, the neighborhoods for their participation, the firefighters, the Red Cross, everyone who's about to help install more smoke detectors in Des Moines than has ever been done in our history, but I'll let Jonathan Lund make a comment.
Thanks, Chief. Right now, we have fire trucks going around to non-recognized neighborhoods installing smoke alarms in school kids' homes that were identified, and this Saturday, we hope to hit every home in Highland Park. We're coordinating with American Red Cross and a number of other agencies to make sure that we have enough people and organization to install smoke alarms in all those homes that need them, and we urge everybody else to take that effort to install smoke alarms in your home and make sure you're safe from the ravages of fire.
All right, our proclamation reads: "The city of Des Moines is committed to protecting those who live and visit our city from hazards of fire. Fire is a significant public safety concern both locally and nationally in homes and the locations where people are at great risk from fire. Working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in half. And the Des Moines Fire Department is committed to protecting our residents, and with the help of the Des Moines neighbors and many other partnering organizations, together we will install more than 10,000 smoke detectors and alarms in homes throughout our city. And the men and women of the Des Moines Fire Department are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and fire-related injuries through prevention and education. Des Moines residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take professional steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2013 Fire Prevention Week theme, Prevent Kitchen Fires, effectively serves to remind us to be cognizant of the hazards present while cooking during Fire Prevention Week and year-round. Now therefore, I, the mayor of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim October 6th to 12th, 2013, as Fire Prevention Week, and call upon the residents of Des Moines to install smoke alarms in their homes and to support the many public safety activities and efforts by the Des Moines Fire Department." Let's give them a great big hand, and thank you both and the department. You bet. Abe Goldstein and John Krantz, come on up. Now, we support a lot of things, and certainly through the years, jazz has been something that we have really supported, and would one or the other you kinda like to talk a little bit about our Jazz History Day in Des Moines?
I can say a little bit.
All right.
The Greater Des Moines Community Jazz Center is a nonprofit organization that's existed for 25 years, I believe, primarily to foster talents of aspiring young jazz students. And for 13 years now, we've held a Jazz Hall of Fame to draw attention to the Community Jazz Center and what we do, and that's always in the month of October, and we appreciate the proclamation to correspond with the date of our event and draw attention to the fact that there are people in this city that make their living playing music and people that, you know, like to go out and enjoy the entertainment that they provide.
All right, this year, our proclamation reads: "American jazz is the music of freedom, individual expression, and creativity enjoyed by people throughout the world and within the city of Des Moines. Whereas jazz musicians who by birth have chosen to call Des Moines their home have had a profound effect both locally and on a national level, on generations of jazz musicians, and have provided years of musical enjoyment and adventure to their loyal local fans. And whereas the Community Jazz Center of Greater Des Moines, a nonprofit organization of jazz musicians, educators, and fans, established the Des Moines Jazz Hall of Fame to honor the city's jazz heroes. And whereas the recipients of this year's award is saxophonist Don Jax...
Jaques.
Jaques, and educator and pianist Robert Washett, and saxophonist Rufus Spates. And whereas this special event will be billed as a celebration of Des Moines jazz on Sunday, October 20th, 2013. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and our citizens, do hereby proclaim Sunday, October 20th, 2013, as Des Moines Jazz History Day, and urge the residents of our community to recognize and support jazz and all other creative art forms that demonstrate the diversity, creativity, and expressiveness of our citizens." Let's give them a great big hand.
They had a great presentation yesterday. Grandview University had a great show, their jazz show.
It was great.
Yes. Yep. Had a good turnout.
All right, we will quickly do our Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board, and we'll call that to order, and I will ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, item two is authorizing the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency to submit disposition application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD for excess property located at 1201 Crocker Street. That's a board communication number 13-508. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion on item two? Any discussion? Motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item two passes. Item three is approving the conveyance of 2523 Southeast 7th Street, a city-owned municipal housing agency property pursuant to the Affordable Home Ownership Program that is covered on board communication number 13-500. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item, 2523 Southeast 7th? Seeing none, could we have a motion on item three?
We move item three.
Item three has been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item four is approving the conveyance of 4228 Lyden Avenue, city-owned municipal housing agency property pursuant to Affordable Home Ownership Program, board communication number 13-501. Is there anybody to speak to this item? Again, conveyance. Could we have a motion on item four?
I'd move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Item five, could we have a motion to adjourn? It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. That completes our Municipal Housing Agency Board Agenda. Prior to beginning our city council meeting, we're gonna have a word from our own council member, Robert Mahaffey, and those who would like to stand and participate, we'd ask you to do so at this time.
Please join with me in a short prayer. We thank you, Lord, for the gathering and for this opportunity to serve you. We ask you your blessing upon this meeting and to everyone here and the matters that we are to discuss. May we act in wisdom and love and to your glory. We ask your guidance to direct our decisions that will be beneficial to the city and to its residents. This we ask in your name. Amen.
All right, we'll call our meeting to order and ask clerk to take roll, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 35. These are routine items. It'll be enacted as one roll call vote unless either a member of the city council or a member of the audience pulls one off for further discussion or clarification. Tonight, item number 4A and J, Coleman votes no, or I guess that's aye. 4A and aye, Coleman votes no. 4I, Grease votes no. 4O, Coleman and Hensley vote no. Five, item five, council members, County and Moore both vote no. Are there any other items this evening to be discussed that anyone would wanna pull off for further clarification or discussion?
Yeah, I came to discuss the Des Moines Municipal something Bell Avenue.
He's on communication reports.
All right, I don't believe that's item three through 35, but we'll get to it here shortly. All right, seeing none, could we have a motion for the balance?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That takes us to item 36, I believe. Item 36 was not used. Takes us to item 37. It's Communication Report from the Chair of the Park and Recreation Board Regarding Board Approval of Changes to the Greater Des Moines Recreation Activity Scholarship Program. Is there someone here to speak to that from the Parks Board? All right, let's...could we have a motion to receive?
I'll move to receive and file and inform the Director of the Park Board.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item 38, from Amy Crowell of 3826 Douglas to speak, seeking support for the Community Youth Concepts STEM Career-Based Mentoring Program. Amy?
Thanks. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Amy Crowell, and I'm here on behalf of Community Youth Concepts and an emerging STEM Advisory Council Coalition that is coming together here in Polk County. I am here in front of you today to request your participation and your support as we move forward with this initiative. As you can see, the reason why we have created this particular group or coalition has been because of the discrepancy between the growing occupations within the metro area and the skill set that we have available in our current student population. And there is a graph up here. I'm trying to get it. It's not possible.
Should we get it up?
The camera's not working for some reason. Perfect. So, I can pass these around, but what you can see is when we look at the growing occupations within the metro area, there are several that really fall into the STEM categories of needing high or middle skill occupation. So, we talk about business, financial, healthcare practitioners, education, sales, and computers, math, and engineering. And when we look at those openings, we're looking at all of those having an 8% or higher increase in occupations within the next 10 years. Of those, when we look at student interest related to those particular careers, in all of these, student...when you look at it overall, student interest does not meet the demand that we see in the occupations. And when we drill that down even further, what we're noticing is when students are asked, what's their level of commitment to a particular field, those numbers are even showing less of a connection to those particular occupations. So, for example, in the business and financial world, they are estimating a 13% increase or 13% growth in the openings in those fields. When we look at how many students are expressing interest in those fields, we're seeing about a 9%...9% of our students expressing interest. When we look at how certain they are of that particular choice, only 5% of our students are actually saying, yes, this is the field that I really want to go into. And then when we look at the abilities of those students who are reporting this interest, and we're looking at their ACT scores and analytical skills and their math skills, we're seeing about 2% of our student population is actually prepared and ready to enter the workforce under those types of high-skill occupations. So, having this data, one of the things that had come to the interest of the Greater Des Moines Partnership was to focus as a recommendation to create a mentoring program that was specifically focused on high-tech, high-needs skills and/or skills that are encapsulated in the STEM movement or the science, technology, engineering, and math movement. So, I run an organization called Community Youth Concepts, and what we do is actually a career-based mentoring program within our organization. And what we have noticed is most of our clientele are girls, low-income students or ethnic minority students. And about three weeks ago, an opportunity crossed our desk, which was called the U.S. 20 City Competition, specifically to STEM mentoring. What we have also noticed in our office is that many of the students have expressed interest in the STEM fields. So, we reached out to the various entities around the community that really focus on STEM-related initiatives and said, you know, can we form a coalition to really increase the number of students that we have that are supported to be able to go into a STEM-related field once they graduate high school? I come to you today to request formal participation in this coalition as we move forward. In part, it's because this particular competition requires city government participation, but personally, I think it's broader than that. We know city governments and our public institutions in general employ many individuals who are in the STEM-related fields. You have an engineering department, you have your IT department, et cetera. So, we're requesting the city's participation, not only from the standpoint of we need it for this competition, but because we think there should be a vested interest in ensuring that our young people are ready to succeed in these high-demand careers that we know we currently have a gap. With that, we're also requesting that the city consider being a location for student placement. So, if we have students who are interested in being in the mentoring...or being in a STEM-related field, that the city consider providing an opportunity for them to mentor within city government. So, that is my request today of the city, is formal participation in this initiative and then consideration of being a placement location.
So, we probably need to have a motion and refer to the manager and sort that out. So, if somebody's willing to put that forward, go ahead. I'll make it after you're done.
Okay, just a couple of questions. When you say participation, are...besides the mentoring role, are you also asking for financial participation?
No.
Okay. So, it's just to be the mentor. So, are you working with the school system as well?
Yes. So, we...yeah, we...CYC currently has programming that is throughout the Des Moines metro area. We are approximately in 16-ish different schools, I would say, middle and high schools.
And so, are you...how are you working with the partnership then?
So, the Greater Des Moines Partnership currently serves...Mary Bontrager currently serves on our MAP Advisory Council, our Mentoring Advisory Council, and they have agreed to be one of the guiding coalition members for the STEM mentoring initiative, as has Pioneer Hybrid and the World Food Prize at this point.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Ms. Coleman?
I would move this and refer it to the manager's office and ask that you keep the council apprised of any reports that you have. I particularly suggest we were lucky this morning to have the superintendent here at our meeting. It's probably another great opportunity to coordinate with the school district and their board and superintendent.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Ms. Coleman?
Vote for your own.
Seven, yes.
All right, thank you for coming down. Great program. All right, we have a request on item 39 from Gil, tomorrow, 650 16th Street, Apartment B5, to speak regarding the Des Moines Police Department. Is Gil in the audience? All right, could we have a motion?
I'll move to recognize she and/or he intended to speak and was not here.
All right. And to receive and file, no comment?
Yes.
All right. And push button.
My...
Seven, yes.
Button's not working.
All right. Item 40 is from Robert Campbell of 846 East Bell Avenue regarding a violation of the noise ordinance.
Yes, sir, the boom boxes on my street are getting worse daily. And last night was the first night in 10 months I have not heard a boom box go up the street, you know? Rattling the windows, et cetera. And according to your noise ordinance, you're not allowed...they're not allowed to play that music if you can hear it 25 feet from the car. And I've gotta copy the noise until you wanna read it. And ma'am, I hear these things 24 hours a day, seven days a week, intermittently, you know? All night long, from 6:30 in the morning to 6:30 the next morning. And I'm not objecting to them playing their music. What I'm objecting to is them making me hear it. And they can keep it inside their car if they want to. They choose not to keep it inside their car. And it's about time somebody starts doing it to the butter. Because it's frankly, you know...now, I've got a statement here if anybody wants to read it. So, I wrote...I gave the City Clerk's office.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move to receive and file a statement.
All right, we have a motion to receive and file. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
I'm not objecting to them, yep, them playing the music. Everybody thinks I'm objecting, they're playing their music, et cetera.
There's seven of us, eight of us.
And frankly, the quality of their music is just about the quality of hanging a 50-gallon rum on a tree and beating it with a baseball bat. That's about what it sounds like, most of the time. And all I want is something reasonable. And I don't feel what's going on now is reasonable. And there's one gentleman across the street at 907 Bell who insists on having a big stairway in his garage and turning it on full blast and going back inside the house and drinking beer. Is that reasonable? Than making me hear it. And I saw him doing this more than once. And frankly, I want some peace and quiet in my house. I did invest $90,000 into a house, and I mean, the house is worth about $90,000 now. And I had put more money into my house than probably any four people on this block. And frankly, all I want is some peace and quiet inside my house. They can play their boom boxes as long as they keep it with inside the car, and that's all I'm asking for.
Let me go...go ahead, Brian.
Robert, you and I talked, and I wanna thank you for bringing this forward. It's not a...it's not an uncommon complaint. It's difficult to enforce, and...but we...I think we all get the same kind of complaints, all of us on this council, and we'll do our best to deal with it, and it's just very difficult to sort of...
And I've called the police so many times, I'm getting tired of calling the police, you know?
Right, right. So, the motion will be to refer to...have you work with the police department and...
Yes, they've been helpful as much as they can be helpful. It's gonna take a change in city code, city law, or something else.
Yeah, it's a constant evolving...constantly evolving...
I mean, they can only enforce the laws as they're, you know, on the books.
Right. It's just...it's when you have... It's, it's just, it's, when you have a car drive by, it's real difficult to sort of.
I mean, vibration supposedly against your, you know, in your noise ordinance is against the law. If they've got a vibrator that vibrates windows, it's supposed to be against the law.
I, I agree, and I think you have seven sympathetic.
And this is not in front of my own, my own house alone.
Yeah.
This is all over the city. I don't care which part of the city you're going to.
Right.
And I've talked to seniors all over the city, at the Peyton, you know, senior center, and a lot of, you know, have the same problem, no matter where they live at on the south side.
Right.
It's the exact same problem, and it goes on daily.
Well, I want to thank you for bringing it forward, and we'll, we'll try and work with you on this and see what we can do, so.
And as I said, all I want is some peace and quiet.
And, and the motion is to refer to the city manager's office for.
Perfect.
To, to work with Mr. Campbell.
Excellent, thanks for coming.
Thanks. We'll have somebody get ahold of you.
All right.
We'll have somebody work with you on this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Seven, yes.
All right, that completes the pre-hearing items and communications reports. Note that the hearings open at five oh one. First item is forty-one. On the vacation conveyance of a portion of a segment of Forty-Fifth Street right-of-way in the vicinity of forty-two, forty-four twenty-one Franklin Avenue to David A. Wright Trust and Catherine N. Circe Trust, two hundred dollars, and to Mary Beth N. Zavino for two hundred dollars. Council Communication number thirteen dash four ninety-six, A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above the waivers requested by the applicants and requires six votes. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the, come forward. Give us your name and address, please, sir.
I'm David Wright from forty-four twenty-one Franklin Avenue, and I'm the landowner next to the land. I've lived at the property for twenty-five years. I've taken care of the property for twenty-five years. For a very long story, the city has owned the property, but I would like to start paying taxes on the property too, as long as I'm taking care of it.
We like that.
I thought you would.
We don't have any to come forward.
So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer questions. That's basically why I'm here.
All right, thank you for coming down and standing up as a good, solid taxpayer, and please bring more down to sign up for similar opportunities. Do we have a motion?
I'll move this item, and you're welcome to mow any other city land while you're at it. We can work something out.
Seven, yes.
And that's forty-one A and B, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, item forty-two, on the vacation conveyance of an easement for the use of airspace over the north four feet of East Locust Street adjoining three fifty East Locust Street to East Village Growth Partners LLC, a thousand dollars, and to continue to October twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Council Communication number thirteen dash four ninety-seven. So we need a motion to continue to October twenty-first.
I'll move.
It's been moved. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Seeing none.
Seven, yes.
All right, item forty-three, on the vacation and lease of a public right-of-way for Sidewalk Cafe at three oh nine Court Avenue, is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above the waivers requested by Court Avenue Brewing Company, and it requires six votes. Is there anybody here to speak to this item?
I'll move forty-three A and B.
Right.
Seven, yes.
All right, item forty-four, on an amendment to the Des Moines twenty-twenty Community Character Land Use Plan and rezoning of property at eleven thirty-nine twenty-fourth Street from R one sixty, one-family, low-density residential to NPC Neighborhood Pedestrian Commercial to allow for commercial reuse of the existing thirty-six-hundred square-foot building. A, which is alternate A, one, approving the amendment to the Des Moines twenty-twenty Community Character Land Use Plan, two is to close the hearing and conditionally approve the proposed rezoning, three, the first consideration of the ordinance above, and four is a final consideration of the ordinance above the waivers requested by Robert J. Mulvaill Jr. and requires six votes. Or, B, which is alternative B, is to deny the amendment to the Des Moines twenty-twenty Community Character Land Use Plan, and two, to close the hearing and deny the proposed Is there anybody here to speak to item forty-four, which is the amendment to the twenty-twenty Community Character Land Use Plan to change from R one sixty to NPC?
Hi, I'm Robert Mulvaill from Coming, Iowa, thirty-one fourteen Coming Road, and I was, I'm the owner of the property. I own the buildings adjacent to it on both sides, and I was looking to change the zoning to make it easier to rent, basically. It's a commercial building, and having the NPC zoning gives me kind of a larger pool of potential tenants to rent to. For example, I had a Filipino grocery store, be interested in it, and something like that wouldn't really fit the workshop classification. It just kind of, it makes it easier to rent it because if I have to come back every time I rent the building and get a variance or get permission, it kind of, it's kind of an asterisk next to the building where I can't really guarantee it'll be available or not. So I was just thinking this would make it simpler and better for the community as well. Because it's kind of the only use of the building is, it's kind of shaped like a shoebox, so you can't really use it for anything besides a commercial building, and right now it's owned, R one sixty, so.
All right. Ms. Hensley?
Could we just ask Michael Ludwig to come up? And I read through the materials last night, but I just want to make sure I understand why we've got the two different options here, and I was a little bit confused as I read
Mayor of County and members of the council, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator for the city of Des Moines. The staff recommendation to the Plan and Zoning Commission was for denial of the rezoning. The Plan and Zoning Commission voted nine-three to find that the amendment to the, or I'm sorry, that the proposed zoning was not consistent with the existing land use plan. They then made a motion to approve the rezoning, and that failed by a six-six vote, I believe, and then they followed up with a motion to deny the zoning, and that motion failed. So it took no further action, so there really was no recommendation from the Plan and Zoning Commission made. So in front of you tonight was basically reflective of the staff recommendation and then the applicant's request. The neighborhood, the Drake Neighborhood Association, did support the applicant's request at the Plan and Zoning Commission hearing, so that would be the different recommendations that you're receiving this evening.
No, I didn't understand.
Yeah, it was, I was confused.
Well, so what's, are we just talking about rezoning this one property, or are we?
Correct. Correct, one single parcel that he owns. The building covers a majority of the property, only in parcel, and our recommendation of the Planning Commission was that it was more appropriate to deny the zoning and have them seek a use variance from the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
But as the App can have stated, their concerns are that they couldn't give any guarantee to someone that was interested in the building until going through that process, and they may have to go through it multiple times if they want to rent to six successive tenants as the property ages.
Mike, there's commercial business in there now, and they're doing screen repairs or something. Is this the one that?
Yeah, it's legal non-conforming use in the R one sixty zoning district.
So had they gone to the zoning Board of Adjustment to get that permission, or?
No, they have to first be denied zoning.
No, but with the.
The present use?
Present use, yeah.
That is legal non-conforming under the zoning. I'm not certain when it was rezoned to R one sixty, but the existing use is considered legal non-conforming in that R one sixty zoning district.
But we have neighborhood support, and you have the buildings on both sides, correct?
And the response cards we got back were all affirmative.
They were all favorable.
Israel.
Okay. More questions, Mike?
I just have a problem with it. It looks like a spotted spot zoning in a residential area. We went through that in plan of zoning back years ago, and we tried to eliminate that from happening, but, you know, the Neighborhood Association has spoken, I think, too, so, yeah.
If I recall correctly, wasn't there, um, a spot zoning by some of the commissioners and?
Yes, yeah, there were concerns about that in the, in the hearing, but ultimately there was not a recommendation made either way.
I would be in favor of making a recommendation for ultimate aid to go ahead and approve it based upon the positive response and the fact that we have neighborhood support and he has the properties on both sides, so I'll move alternate A.
And I'll, I'll support that, that motion. This is a tough one because I, I don't think commercial is ideal there, but at the same time, it's a commercial building. It'll, it'll never be anything else, and it's been that way for some time, so I guess the neighborhood support and the affirmative response cards are sufficient for me.
I think, Bob, I totally agree with you, but I think in this case, I don't see what he can do with that building other than do that. I'm hopeful that we don't end up, you know, ten years from now wishing that we had done something different, but, so I'll support this.
Six, yes, one, no.
Okay, item forty-five, which is on the Army Post Road Bridge over the Great Western Trail, a resolution approving the plan, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as C.J. Moynha and Sons, Inc., John P. Moynha, President, one million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Council Communication number thirteen dash four ninety-eight, A is the approval of the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item, which is the Army Post Road Bridge over the Great Western Trail?
I'll move forty-five, forty-five A.
All right.
Did you change my? I hit the wrong one.
Uh, second. Sorry, I already hit display.
Okay, I'll live with it.
No, you can re-vote. You want to re-vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I hate when that shows up there when I missed.
That's two meetings in a row I did that.
Six, yes, one, no.
Stressed out.
All right, let's note that the hearings conclude at five thirteen, and could we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We said adjourned. Thank you all for attending this evening.